Do we have a hard stop at six thirty for someone to go to a meeting?
Uh, I think I'm, I was connecting and I think we're able to go longer if necessary. But we will do a check in and hopefully let's just think that maybe we'll be done by then. Okay, it is five o'clock. Uh, staff, city manager, you getting folks ready? Okay, all right, good evening. Uh, we're going to call the San Bernardino City Council's special meeting of March thirtieth, twenty twenty-one to order. And if I could please have roll call.
Council member Hamilton.
Here.
Council member Salazar.
Here.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Here.
Mayor Rico Medina.
Here. And now we're going to move on to item three, public comments for items not on the agenda. If there is anybody from the public who wishes to speak on uh, an item other than the one that we're having a study session on for this evening, you could please raise your virtual hand now and we'll call upon you. Not seeing any, we'll move on to item four, study session. Receive report on the traffic study for Huntington Avenue cycle track project and provide direction on the preferred alternative. And we will turn it over to the city manager, please.
Sure. Uh, good afternoon, mayor and city council and members of the public. Uh, this item as we know, uh, we were not able to accomplish at our last council meeting. And so there's a special meeting tonight uh, for this important project. And so as the mayor mentioned, uh, we have a presentation for you on the Huntington Avenue cycle track project. And we are looking for direction tonight uh, on a preferred alternative uh, so we can uh, continue work on this important project and uh, make sure that we comply with all of the grant uh, requirements and 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 move uh, forward. So tonight's presentation will be provided by Jimmy Tan, our public works director, uh, supported by David Wong, uh, one of our principal engineers. And so why don't I turn it over now to Jimmy Tan, who will provide the presentation and um, we will, give us a moment as we share the screen and make it full screen and then we will be ready uh, to begin.
Great. Um, thank you, city manager. A good afternoon, uh, honorable mayor, members of the city council, Jimmy Tan, public works director. Uh, as the city manager mentioned, the item in front of you regards to the Huntington Avenue cycle track project. Um, as you, city has a capital improvement project to install a cycle track on Huntington Avenue between Centennial Trail and near San Bruno Bart Station as well as the San Bruno Avenue uh, Caltrain Station. Uh, the cycle tracks are also referred to as a class four um, or bicycle facility that is separated from vehicles and pedestrians. Uh, when the project was completed back in twenty sixteen, as part of the walk-in bike plan, the lane of travel on North Huntington Avenue would be removed to make way for the cycle track. Uh, the city was then awarded a federal grant. As part of the grant acceptance, council requested a traffic study to be performed and brought back to council. Uh, David Wong, our uh, principal civil engineer, uh, will be also presenting tonight uh, regards to the traffic uh, study. Um, and then there is also consultants on here tonight as well, Aaron, uh, from DKS, who performed the uh, the traffic study, uh, a traffic engineering consultant. And Syed, uh, which who is our city's interim traffic engineer can also answer any traffic engineering related questions as well. And the objective of the uh, the prop, the item tonight is shown on the um, the screen. It is to provide the city council with information regarding the implementation of a class four bike boy and to request council to provide direction on a preferred alternative. Both the uh, the bottom image, uh, and image on the right are illustrative of components of a cycle track. Uh, note that the raised barriers, uh, providing both physical and vertical separation from vehicle travel lanes and the pedestrian sidewalk. Next, please. So this slide provides the agenda for tonight's uh, presentation. Uh, there's a bit of information to cover. We'll review the background and benefits of this project, uh, discuss the design alternatives and project limits under consideration. Summarize the results of the traffic study that was performed for the project. Discuss the project cost and available funding sources, uh, discuss the grant requirements and provide staff recommendation and then conclude with answering any questions, um, public comment and requesting counsel's input. Next slide, please. Uh, for the background, the city adopted the walk-in bike plan back in uh, July of twenty sixteen. Uh, this document is meant to serve as a long-range kind of document to guide the city's decision uh, about walking and biking for many years uh, into the future. The ultimate goal of this plan is to make walking and biking in San Bruno safer, uh, easier and more popular. Uh, what plan made many recommendations, which the city is currently working towards. Tonight, we're discussing one specific recommendation, uh, which is the implementation of class four um, the cycle track on Huntington Avenue. Uh, from the photos, you know, on the slide, you can see that the Huntington Avenue is used by bicyclists, uh, already including families on bicycles. Um, and on the bottom of photo, it appears that cyclists were coming from Bart Station, uh, crossing to get into the sidewalk adjacent to the northbound Huntington Avenue travel lanes. And a photo on the right, you can see that there's residents bicycling with an attached child trailer and and um, with family choosing to ride on the sidewalk. It's not an ideal situation. Yes, family would have to share a sidewalk with pedestrians that would have been uh, walking on the sidewalk as well. So based on these photos, you know, you can see that the Huntington Avenue lacks the enhanced bicycle uh, amenities and for those wishing to travel along the corridor. Um, the background's here, um, there's an aerial photo of Huntington Avenue from Google Earth. Uh, Huntington Avenue is currently configured as a four-lane wide uh, road uh, with two lanes in each, you know, southbound and northbound uh, direction. A landscape meeting is exists at certain locations, which by the both the northbound and southbound lanes. The speed limit along that corridor is about thirty miles per hour. Uh, on this picture, you can see Tamperan Bart Station, uh, city's uh, police station um, on your left-hand uh, side. And the cycle track is proposed to be along the northbound lanes of Huntington Avenue. Next slide. So what are the benefits from implementing the uh, the cycle track project? Um, one of the benefits is that they will provide connection uh, between Camper and Regional Mall, fifth edition residential neighborhood, uh, downtown San Bruno, Centennial Way, Way Trail, and the adjacent regional transit systems of Bart and Caltrain. Also, implementation of the cycle track would yield a range of positive benefits, including reducing a roadway uh, congestion, uh, reducing air pollution, promoting physical well-being among residents and providing better connections to retail and housing. And lastly, the uh, the project has the potential to shift transportation choices from single occupancy vehicles to biking and walking within the transit corridor specific plan area, uh, which was identified as an area for transit-oriented development. Um, so this will be discussed in further detail later in the presentation. The staff will be recommended on a cycle track uh, being installed without requiring removal of any uh, travel lanes in order to accommodate a necessary increase in vehicular, vehicular traffic caused by future developments, while still maintaining all the benefits of having a cycle track for the residents that transition from driving to biking and walking. So now I will turn uh, over to a presentation to David Wong, um, who will be presenting on the, the project alternates and the chara- traffic study.
Uh, so on this slide, you can see the project limits and scope of work for the various design alternatives under consideration. For alternatives one and three, the project limit is to construct a cycle track from Centennial Way Trail to San Bruno Avenue. Alternative one will eliminate the outermost northbound travel lane and replace it with a cycle track. Alternative three would maintain that travel lane while still constructing that cycle track. And alternative two has a similar scope of work to alternative three, but will construct a smaller segment, that segment being from Herman Street to San Bruno Avenue. This slide is a visual depiction of the project limits of the three alternatives under consideration. Here, you can see how implementation of a cycle track provides convenient connections by connecting the residence of the fifth edition neighborhood located on the top left with the regional transit systems of Bart and Caltrain. Travelers coming off those transit stops would have easy access via the cycle track to the Tamperan Shopping Center and downtown San Bruno, which is located just off the page on the right. This slide shows the alternative one design concept for the segment of the cycle track directly opposite of the Huntington Bart Station. Help or in ourselves is location, the Bart Station is this building uh, in white. Uh, the roadway with a single car on it is not Huntington Avenue. Um, this is the passions, your pickup and drop-off zone for the Bart Station, Huntington Avenue stopbound travel lanes, uh, which start to are actually in the middle of the photo. To the bottom of those southbound travel lanes is a divided median. You can see the trees on that median. Um, and there will be no changes to the southbound travel lanes and the median with alternative one. As you can tell from this slide, alternative one will remove the outermost northbound travel lanes and replace it with a two-way cycle track. This two-way cycle track is depicted in green on this slide. The yellow that you see on the top of the green is a physical buffer. Uh, think of it as a concrete curb that will separate the cycle track from the now only single existing northbound travel lane. Other minor, minor civil improvements would include construction of accessible curb ramps, some pedestrian lighting improvements at intersections and concrete refuge islands, uh, which is what is shown in blue to shorten the crossing distance for pedestrians to get across Huntington Avenue as the roadway is fairly wide. To summarize, alternative one will remove a northbound travel lane. This will result in a vehicular capacity reduction in the northbound direction and will have a moderate impact on traffic, which we will touch on in greater detail later. This slide shows the design concept of both alternatives two and three. As a reminder, alternative two is the exact same design as alternative three. The difference is that alternative two will construct a short set segment of cycle track. Alternative two and three will maintain both travel lanes except at the intersection of Huntington uh, and San Bruno Avenue. At that location, um, due to the limited roadway width available, there will be one northbound travel lane for distance of a couple hundred feet before opening back up the two travel lanes. The rest of the project quarter would look similar to the design shown here. Um, and to help orient ourselves, the orientation of Huntington Avenue in this slide has been flipped uh, from the alternative one slide. On this slide, the Bart Station is located on the bottom of the picture. You can see uh, the Bart passenger pickup and drop-off zone on the bottom. The two southbound Huntington Avenue travel lanes and the divided median is located in the bottom of the picture. Exist, existing features that will not change are shown in light gray and new construction is solid black. For this alternative, as you can tell, there will be no changes to Huntington Avenue between the divided median and uh, and the southbound travel lanes, aside from the incorporation of some pavement markings, um, the class three shores, which are to me, to remind motorists to share the road with bicycles traveling in the southbound direction. All the improvements are concentrated between the divided median and Huntington Avenue East, which is a local residential road used by the fifth edition neighborhood. The difference between this design and the design shown on the previous slide is that the goal of this design is to have all the benefits that will come from having a cycle track without having to have a negative impact on traffic by maintaining all the existing travel lanes. Due to the existing roadway configuration, maintaining both travel lanes would require reconstruction of both northbound travel lanes and the existing pedestrian pathway and landscape area between Huntington Avenue and Huntington Avenue East. Retaining walls would need to get constructed. You can see that in the triangle line type uh, right here. And uh, there will also have to be other work, um, that includes uh, relocating utilities, including storm drains, streetlight conduits we need to get relocated and traffic signal poles will also need to get relocated and replaced. So a traffic study was performed for this project and evaluated to future traffic conditions, uh, which being the anticipated traffic in twenty twenty-five and twenty forty under three different build scenarios, uh, those being the no build scenario, the lane removal scenario to accommodate the cycle track and uh, maintain two travel lanes while also implementing a cycle track scenario. Level service LOS is a qualitative measure uh, used to analyze railways and intersections and has a range from A to F. Level service A is free flow and level source F represents jammed or stop angle traffic. For San Bruno, level service up to D is considered to be acceptable. I will note that the purpose of this slide is to present a high-level overview of the traffic study. The traffic study in its entirety was provided in the council agenda packet. And this slide illustrates traffic conditions in twenty twenty-five during the PM peak. Um, PM peak being the timeframe when the highest traffic occurs in the northbound direction and is a one-hour period between four PM and six PM. While there is some minor changes in anticipated delay for all three scenarios, the no build, the lane removal and the maintain travel lane scenario. The important thing to note is that level of service F will occur at two intersections regardless of whether or not there is a cycle track project. This is due to the anticipated growth in traffic for the region that is expected by twenty twenty-five. You might also know that at the intersection of Huntington Avenue with Herman Street, uh, right here, the level of service is worse under the no build alternative when compared versus the cycle track construction alternatives. This is entirely due to the medium effect caused by the lane reduction at the start of the project corridor beginning at the intersection of Huntington Avenue with San Bruno Avenue. While level service is slightly better at the intersection of Huntington Avenue with Herman Street under the lane removal alternative, the overall net impact caused by removing a travel lane is that it will worsen the overall corridor travel time, which is the amount of time it takes to drive from San Bruno Avenue to Snee Flane. And uh, this slide shows the anticipated level of service in twenty forty. Um, all intersections are expected to degrade to level service F. Again, this is entirely due to the anticipated growth in traffic for the region that is expected by twenty forty. And while it will, uh, in the with or about cycle track, should the city choose to remove a travel lane, that certainly won't help improve traffic conditions as lane removal would reduce the capacity of the corridor by half. And in summary, uh, the worst quarter travel time, which is the time it takes to travel on Huntington Avenue from San Bruno Avenue to Snee Flane occurs under the travel lane removal scenario. This makes sense intuitively because removing a travel lane removes vehicular capacity D from the roadway. Based on the traffic study, the difference in the quarter travel time would be an additional ten to twenty seconds in twenty twenty-five under the lane removal scenario. This is the worst quarter travel time as modeled by the traffic simulation. While overall the operational impacts of cycle track installation falls within acceptable ranges, there are moderate traffic impacts associated with lane removal such as increased travel time and traffic operations with cycle track installed while maintaining travel lanes is largely similar, similar to the no build scenario, which again makes sense. Um, so before going to detail on the slide, staff wants to mention that while cost is something that we consider, cost must also absolutely be considered in conjunction with the potential drawbacks and benefits that proposed project offers. In general, staff feels that simply considering cost while considering other factors may result in unfavorable project after effects. Alternative one will construct a cycle track by removing one northbound travel lane um, between Centennial Way Trail to San Bruno Avenue and has an estimated cost of one point two million. Alternative two will construct a partial segment cycle track while maintaining both travel lanes between Herman Street to San Bruno Avenue. And that will cost an estimated two point six million. And alternative three will construct a full segment cycle track by maintaining both travel lanes between Centennial Way Trail to San Bruno Avenue with an estimated cost of six point eight million. City staff regularly pursues grant opportunities as a means of maximizing the funding available to the city. And today, this it, this project had received up to two point nine million grant funds. The O-Bag, um, uh, shown right here is a federal grant that will provide nine hundred fourteen thousand should the city construct a cycle track from Centennial Way Trail to San Bruno Avenue. And SMCTA grant will provide out of one point four million if we were to construct a cycle track from Herman Street to San Bruno Avenue or up to two million if the city constructs the full segment cycle track. Um, staff is also exploring other funding sources in addition to grant opportunities. And to utilize the nine hundred fourteen thousand from O-Bag, uh, this grant requires that the city construct the full segment cycle track and that the project is ready for a bid advertisement by January twenty twenty-three. This means that the funding for the project, uh, for the selected design alternative should be secured and in place for contract award by summer of twenty twenty-three. There is no time extension allowed for this grant. To utilize SMCTA funds, this grant requires that the city complete the cycle type design by um, December twenty twenty-three with construction being completed by December twenty twenty-five. If the city is unable to meet that deadline, then SMCTA will allow for time extension provided that the city could justify that request. And the entirety of Huntington Avenue, uh, between Snee Flane and Herman Street um, is currently within Bart jurisdiction and the northbound Huntington Avenue travel lanes from Herman Street to San Bruno Avenue is within the city of San Francisco jurisdiction. Staff has been and is continuing to work with these two governmental agencies to resolve these right-of-way issues. So alternative three, the design alternative to maintain both travel lanes while also having a cycle track would provide the greatest future benefit while also having the least negative side effects. Implementation of a cycle track along this corridor would encourage residents to mode shift from cars to biking and walking. This is due much in part to the location of the proposed project. Huntington Avenue is one of the city's most important connectors for pedestrian and bicyclists. Um, it provides city residents with direct connections to Centennial Way Trail, Tamperan Regional Mall, downtown San Bruno, the regional transit systems of Bart and Caltrain and the Bell Air and Fifth Edition neighborhoods. Based on the traffic study, we know that due to future growth in the region, the entire corridor is anticipated to increase in traffic levels, leading to reduction level service for the entire corridor. So alternative three, by maintaining both travel lanes, will keep the status quo on the expected traffic levels and not make things worse like moving a travel lane with. And implementation of the cycle track, while quantifying the amount of mode shift from cars to biking is not possible, will reduce the amount of people choosing to drive along this corridor since those drivers can now choose to use the cycle track instead of the personal vehicles. Um, we recognize that alternative three is the most complex of the design alternatives, but as this design would provide the greatest future benefit without any of the potential traffic impacts associated with lane removal, um, staff recommends that alternative B be the preferred design alternative and staff will continue to seek other funding sources, which would include grant opportunities as they become available to fund the project. And this concludes uh, staff's presentation and we're available to answer any questions.
And if we could, uh, stop sharing the screen, please? Thank you. All right, at this time, uh, council, I'm, I'm gonna, in case folks need to, um, want to make a comment and maybe need to depart. I'm going to ask if there are anybody, if there is anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this, if you could please raise your virtual hand now. And we'll see how many hands we will get.
Um, Malcolm Robinson.
Okay, hold on, please. So at this time, I see, uh, uh, Mr. Robinson is the only speaker, so he is the one and only speaker. And uh, city clerk, thank you very much, if you could bring him in.
Hi Malcolm, can you hear us?
I can, can you hear me?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
All right, thank you. Um, boy, no build scenario makes sense. I, you know, I, we need to change the mindset in San Bruno. Look at El Camino Real, it's ten lanes, twelve lanes wide at Snee Flane. We need to make it safer for bicyclists and walkers in San Bruno. And we need a mindset in the city council and in public works and the city manager's office to do so. Um, we need to do something. If you want to put a lot of apartments down there downtown and have people take public transport, Bart and Caltrain, we need to make it easy for them to do that. A lot of people take San Bruno Bart Station to go to South San Francisco because it's the closest station. So it makes sense from a bicycling perspective. Um, thank you for looking at this project to make it safer to walk and bike in San Bruno. Um, personally, I'd like to see a, a complete cycle track from San Bruno Avenue all the way to Herman and then uh, beyond all the way down to, to Millbrae is ideal. Um, and I'd like to know what elements you've put into this plan for stormwater runoff. I saw a catch basin, but I'm not certain what that is. Um, and I'm hoping that's something to help alleviate the storm runoff situation we see in San Bruno today. Among the funds you mentioned, you don't mention funds from CCG. I've been on the San, uh, the CCG Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee for four years. Um, and we've given you, it's over three hundred thousand dollars and that wasn't listed in there. So it'd be nice if you gave some recognition to the other sources of funding, um, for this project. I'd like to say one last thing about this, this committee. So it's under CCG, so city and counties of San Mateo County. Um, and there are three open seats for elected officials on the committee. Right now, we have five of eight, uh, people on the committee representing different cities. Millbrae is well represented. Uh, Catherine Matsamoto from South City did a lot of great work on the committee and brought a lot of funding to South San Francisco for their projects. When I joined the committee four, five years ago, Ken Ibarra was on the committee. So, um, there are three seats available and I would like, I would ask that somebody from the San Bruno City Council show an interest and commitment to other modes of transportation other than the automobile uh, and join the committee and help make it safer to walk and bike, um, in San Bruno and in San Mateo County. Um, in any case, thanks for the work on this project. I, I don't really like the grading system. You have too many Fs on the great project or on a project that would make it safer to walk and bike in that area. Um, so please show a commitment to bicycling in San Bruno. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. All right, we'll bring it back to city council at this time. Thank you. Um. Questions of with staff? Um, and I guess one question was stormwater runoff, which obviously is a topic. Is there anything, um, from staff that can address that?
Um, regards to stormwater runoff, that's something that we would have to evaluate whether we can install a, um, low-impact, um, development type, like C three, uh, like green infrastructure type along the, uh, divided corridor. That's something that we'll evaluate as part of the design.
Thank you. Uh, questions from colleagues? Let's see, unless there's more? No? Okay. Uh, questions from colleagues? Okay.
I, I have questions, but I go first all the time, so I'm gonna let other people go first this time.
Okay. Nobody minds, but I appreciate your thoughts, sharing. Um. Uh, Vice Mayor Medina.
Yes, thank you, uh, Mayor Medina and thank you staff for the report. It's, it's nice to see this back. Um, I need to switch over to my, uh, my notes on my phone, so I'm gonna go off, uh, video for a second. Um, I did submit these questions to staff. Um. And I did get a response that I did turn them in late, uh, being this morning and there wasn't time to really provide a written response to me, but, um, the first part is the traffic study. Um, the, the traffic study was based on twenty nineteen data. And in our approval for one-one-one San Bruno Avenue, um, it's my understanding the project is removing a southbound lane on Huntington and was this, um, considered during the traffic study?
Uh, council member Medina, uh, we'll have Jimmy Tan respond to one-one San Bruno, uh, and, uh, the lane treatment for that project.
Yeah, so in regards to one-eleven San Bruno Avenue, my understanding is that, you know, self, as you cross San Bruno Avenue, you know, towards, you know, along Huntington, um, the lane actually started to merge as well into a single lane. So there's maybe about a short stretch of, you know, two lanes, uh, just in front of one-eleven Avenue, uh, one-eleven on San Bruno Avenue, uh, and then it becomes one lane again. So I believe as part of the development was to remove that, um, transitional lane into a single lane, uh, there. But I didn't know, we don't believe there wouldn't be, there will be any issues with the traffic, um, impact uh, just by that short segment just south of that, um, you know, San Bruno Avenue crossing. Because north of that, there'll still be two lanes here, right? And then one of the lane, there's a left turn, left turn lane towards, um, to make a left turn. Um, and then there will be the, the single, the single right-hand lane, most likely be a, a, a right turn only lane. And then the middle lane will be, uh, the one that's going, you know, across San Bruno Avenue. Uh, so, you know, with that, I don't think there will be any issues regarding traffic, you know, impacts that just at that, uh, location. Um, I, I think, you know, you also had some questions related to the connectivity or maybe Malcolm, um, Mr. Robinson had as well. This project is, will connect to other, um, bicycle improvements that we're, the city is looking at. This, you know, we have, we received a couple of grants, uh, in the past, you know, along the San Antonio corridor. Uh, we will be putting, you know, bike chero's, you know, within that area to connect, this whole segment will connect uh, in continuity with all of the bicycle improvements along San, San Antonio, uh, as well as Huntington Avenue, um, all the way to Millbrae.
That's, that's great. Um, I, I, I know, I've heard of that. I just haven't seen that in a while. And I think, uh, for those that are really interested to see what we're actually trying to achieve here, uh, would be beneficial. So that's fine. Uh, let me go back to my questions. Um.
So we have TSBC and BPAC, and were they involved in reviewing these alternatives?
I could turn that over to David to see whether, you know, he can chime in on this. David?
Hi, so members of the council. So regarding the alternatives, I believe BPAC reviewed the initial alternative and TSBC, which was the one delay rule, the one for maintaining two travel lanes. That wasn't something that the staff specifically brought up to either BPAC or TSBC.
Okay. And, and the data that is on the bicyclist, do we have any numbers? Was there any outreach to the bicyclist to find out what their input would be? Who's, 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 how many people are actually using that segment? Clearly, if the bike lanes were installed, more people would be willing to do so, but if, I was curious if we had any other data on the bicyclist, because the traffic study just mentioned observations on one day.
So, council member Medina, let me take that, you're absolutely right. The traffic study mentioned observations on one day. I think if we sort of step up on the balcony, this is intended to be a project that provides the Class A separated bike lane connecting our downtown to our main retail hub, which in the future, we know will also be a job hub for the area. There's the Lane Partners Project that is currently planned for South San Francisco, and then there are active plans being developed to be submitted to San Bruno, potentially to put office on part of Tanfran. In addition, we know that ABAD has designated Tanfran as a place for housing. And so we still, as a community, have to grapple with that. And so this project is really intended to one, provide that separated Class A bike lane for recreational uses, but also with the future growth in San Bruno around this area to allow more people to get out of the cars and, 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 and use that protected bike lane that we all know is more safer. In addition, the preferred alternative is trying to achieve the best of both worlds, which is to not reduce the existing four lanes worth of travel on that Huntington stretch, because we know that traffic will only get worse in the future, no matter how much development occurs. And there are also other projects that were not captured in the traffic study. For example, when we take, when we think about our great separation project at Scott Street. When that project happens, which is a long-range plan, potentially not for five to ten years from now, but that will close off vehicular access to that portion of the community. And we may wanna think about opening up more access for that community by having a access onto Huntington for that Scott Street neighborhood. By taking out a lane of travel, we've reduced the capacity, and we're potentially adding more traffic. That, of course, the traffic study did not capture, because it's long-term visiting in that study was done in 2019. And so we really pivoted to this alternative, trying to achieve what is the best outcome for San Bruno. And I'll certainly tell you, one of the conversations that I had with staff is sort of, let's look at costs, but let's step back and say, based on what we know is gonna happen, and that the traffic study looked at, based on everything that we know that's in the hopper and being planned since then, what's your best engineering recommendation? And that's really how we pivoted to these alternatives. Is there a way to maintain the four lanes of travel, but also have that protected bike lane for the bike community? So when we have that growth, people hopefully will bike from Caltrain or bike from downtown or bike from the BART station, reducing the traffic that's on our streets. And that's how we really arrived, arrived at this. This project started off as removing a traffic lane and having that protected bike lane. And, and, and this pivot is really to enjoy that benefit, but also not have a negative impact to our residents, both current and future.
Sorry, a couple more questions. I remember the TSBC approved a crosswalk at Euclid. And I'm sorry, I didn't submit this earlier, but with, with the desire to have residents take public transit, particularly the train in this case, is, is that project just now gone for that crosswalk at Euclid?
Um, David, do you have, um, do you have an answer for that as well?
Yeah, so I do recall that the TSBC had approved that crosswalk location, and should be perceived as designed as something that will certainly try to fit into the project.
Okay. So maybe this sort of traffic engineer could help me understand, if, if you're taking two lanes on Huntington, and you're turning it into one, and then it goes back to two. I've seen that that lane merged really caused problems, so there's no other alternative there, apparently, of how we're taking two lanes and it turned it into one for, for a couple hundred feet. I was wondering if we could just hear from and, and that the traffic study did account for that in the delays in, in operations of, of that, of that traffic flow.
I'll come on board here. Melissa, would you be able to let Erin in?
Hi Erin, I'm trying to get you unmuted.
Hi, I'm back. Yes, I think you're, you are referring to the the reduction just north of San Bruno Avenue for a few hundred feet. They're both Alternatives One and Two. And yes, we did incorporate that into our operational model. And in fact, that does sort of meter the traffic that's coming from south of San Bruno and San Bruno Avenue. That lane reduction, it does serve as sort of a bottleneck to traffic getting into the study corridor. Does that answer your question?
Okay, so it was included in, in the model?
Yes.
Okay, and, and my next, my next question is another potential bottleneck. I couldn't really tell from the drawings, but as we go under 380, how does all of that fit with those, with those pipe, with those structures there? Is that later on in the design, or is that something you guys can figure out now with, with wavelength? Lane width?
So, so we did look at that portion specifically, and it appears, given the existing four-way width and the pure abutments of the overcrossing structure, we'll be able to fit it inside. We just will need to reduce the existing hardscape median by some width amount.
Okay. Those are my questions for now, thank you.
Any questions from colleagues? In the presentation and report?
I have a question.
Councilmember Mason?
Great, thank you. So how, so I'm just thinking back as I'm looking through the PowerPoint. If I remember correctly, the 111 Huntington project, the only way to get into that lot is gonna be through Huntington and then San Bruno Avenue. And so is there, I just, I just looked up the previous staff report when it came to planning commission. So are we talking about making, it's only gonna be one lane once you're crossing San Bruno Avenue and Huntington? At the time of crossing, so is there a possibility of a backup right there at 111 Huntington that would then go into that four-way cross path?
Erin, could you speak on traffic impacts?
Yeah, I was just checking the map here, so it looks like this 111 Huntington is just south of the study corridor. And so that is removing a lane in the southbound direction, if I heard correctly. So it's not something we looked at specifically. I will say, you know, we're seeing more due to the, the future, the forecasted travel. It does increase more in the southbound direction, and there was more queuing along the study corridor in the southbound direction. So let me see what the existing cross section is there. I mean, that's there is queuing in the southbound direction, I will say that. And if there's further lane reduction, I guess on Huntington Avenue, it looks like it reduces down anyway. Maybe a few hundred feet south. So, well, we didn't look at the, I think it's correct. It's probably not going to make things worse than they would be anyway.
Yeah, so we're sharing the screen now. I think it's important that we make note that the project we're talking about, this is San Bruno Avenue right here, and the 111 project that we're talking about is really right on this corner. And so the cycle track is actually outside of the boundaries of the project we're talking about. The project that we're talking about really begins at San Bruno Avenue at Huntington and builds through to the BART station. And so the lane, the, the short portion of the lane that's being reduced as a part of the 111 San Bruno Avenue is right here on the southbound side. The cycle track, mind you, will, will be on the northbound side of, 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 of this, in either scenario. And so I think what you have, the engineer saying is, while there is a small reduction related to the 111 project and as you enter going southbound on Huntington Avenue, it really does not impact this project thus was not a part of the, the study. One, because it's outside of the study area, and two, because the cycle track is planned to be on the eastern side of the road.
So, but I, I mean, I, so I understand that it's not the same project, but it's right across the street. And I don't understand how we can't consider one without the other, because I think there's gonna be a backup right there. And then you add to that, you know, the new, the new development that's gonna be on the other side of the project, right? And that's, what do they say, they're expecting 11,000 people a day? I think we can't not consider it.
Well, that's why I wanna point out, the recommended alternative serving the travel lanes. The, the original alternative had reducing the travel lanes, and certainly that would have more of a negative impact. The recommended alternative of keeping all four travel lanes does not negatively impact vehicular traffic. It provides that protective cycle track and maintains all, all four travel lanes. And so as you enter this cycle track, let's say if you're coming from downtown, you would be on the eastern side of the road. And so that small lane reduction on this heading southbound should not impact the cycle track project that we're talking about.
Just so I'm clear, when you say it should not impact the cycle path project, or is that the same as saying that there will be no impact on traffic?
Whether there's, and the engineers can correct my, the terminology. In the preferred alternative, which is maintaining all existing four travel lanes, the reduction of a sort of merged lane heading southbound relating to the 111 San Bruno project will not have an impact or, or at all be bearing on this project to, in the preferred alternative, maintain all four travel lanes and put the cycle track on the eastern side of the road. And it's sort of, everything we're talking about is sort of north of, of, of this project. And if we go with the recommended alternative to maintain the travel lanes, it's sort of status quo with regard to vehicular traffic and, and, and only beneficial with regard to both pedestrian and bike traffic, because we're providing that, that protected and more aesthetically pleasing path. So hopefully more people will actually get out of their cars and use other modes of transportation as they're going from downtown to, to, to Caltrain, to BART, to Tanfran, Town Center, et cetera.
Yes, so just to reiterate, the cycle track project alternatives really only potentially impact northbound traffic.
Councilmember, do you have additional questions or comments?
I think the, the only question I had was to piggyback off of Vice Mayor Medina's regarding, is, is I guess we're all back to the TSBC. Is there anything stopping the council from recommending that I go back to the TSBC with the consideration of 111 Huntington as well? And considering all of it as, as one continuous, I guess, one continuous path? I'm not really sure what terminology to use, but I, I don't see how they're just not connected, and I think that that's gonna be a really bad gridlock.
Okay, so, and city manager or city attorney, we're, we're talking about a project that doesn't go into 111. Also, I don't know how the grant funding, the, the funding came, but I know that additional, which is outside of the scope of, at least I know what came to the Transportation Authority with that, so I, I, I think we're, we're on two different things, but I wanna check with the city manager.
Yeah. Well, so, given the grant deadlines that we're facing, it's really important that we decide on a preferred alternative. Staff can absolutely, at a later date, go back to the TSBC. I mean, this project will not be, be built for quite some time. But I, you do have your, your traffic engineer saying that there is no impact between that very short reduction on the western side of San Bruno Avenue outside of the project path to the cycle track, especially if we choose the option that is maintaining all four lanes of traffic. There's no negative impact. And while Councilmember Mason, I hear you sort of concerned about a potential bottleneck. What I would say is, a bottleneck for vehicular traffic absolutely may be made worse if we take out a lane of travel. Right? If you go with the, with the option of keeping all four lanes, you're keeping the status quo, and you're only sort of providing additional benefit by having the full travel lane. All, all, all four existing travel lanes. And, but also this project is outside of the boundaries of, of 111 San Bruno. It's just, yes, it is just across the street, but it's outside of the boundary.
Anything else at this time, Councilmember Mason?
Just, thank you, Mayor Medina. I guess I'm just trying to understand why. I, I understand that they're two separate projects. I'm not, I'm just not understanding why they, why we can't think about the impact of one on the other. I'm not saying to change the whole project, I'm just saying, can we just make sure that we are considering it? From what I just heard, I mean, from what I just heard, it wasn't that one doesn't impact the other, it's that it just um, one doesn't impact the other. It's that it just wasn't considered in the project. So I'm, I mean, this is gonna be a big impact on, like I said, I mean, the, when we had um the group, I'm forgetting their name right now, but from the other, the group that's building that little biotech hub, I mean, they were very clear that they were expecting eleven thousand employees a day. So um, I just want to make sure that when we are planning this, we really are thinking about one of the busiest corridors that we have.
And and I think what the city manager said, it's not to say that that can't be looked at, that it can't go to TSPC in regards to one one one, but that's not within the project that we're discussing and having the study session. But I do see somebody else came online. Um, usually when the camera comes on, I'm gonna assume somebody wants to uh, add something.
If I may say something here.
Please.
There. Um, what usually this project, when you look at the tables and you look at twenty twenty five, what it means, it's considered all the development that happens. Not only one 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 San Bruno, but others that's might happen. So that project and their traffic impact is already considered on the table. And that's why some of the intersections are bad when you look at twenty twenty five. And then when you look at twenty forty, there are more projects anticipated. So the effect of one one, it's not that it has been ignored and Erin can correct me. It's already considered in in the level of service analysis.
Yeah, that that's exactly right. And we used as a source for growth forecasts, the regional travel demand model maintained by CCAG. So that has built into it certain assumptions about regional growth. And it, you know, in theory is consistent with all the local jurisdictions, general plans as far as land use and future future growth assumptions.
Thank you. And and just um, uh, one last question, Mayor Medina. So just to be clear, the um, alternative three, um, we would, we would essentially keep all the same lanes. I just want to confirm that. So there would be, it says here, no lane removal. Um, and there would still be a, I guess, a safe bicycle track.
That's that's correct.
Okay.
Alternative three keeps all four lanes.
Okay, just confirming. Thank you.
Councilmember Hamilton?
So um re- regarding one eleven San Bruno Avenue, right now there's two lane southbound. That's the no build scenario. With any of the three alternatives before us, there's gonna be two lane southbound. So that that's how I'm able to separate the two things because there's no, yes, they're right next to each other. And I have, and my next question actually does uh, um, it it does uh, get to potential impacts outside of the study area. But I don't think that this is one. That's, there there's definitely um potential for backup there. Um, council member Mason is absolutely correct. Um, you know, cars transiting into one eleven could cause a delay there and cause a backup. But that's gonna happen no matter what we do with this, whether we do nothing or whether we build any of the three alternatives in 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 my view, from looking at all of this together. Um, I have a a follow-on from council member or from Vice Mayor Medina's question regarding um, the removal of the northbound lane at San Bruno Avenue for two hundred feet. Um, it was stated that this would do, that this reduced traffic flow coming into the study corridor, meaning that there's, there were fewer, the the anticipation was there's less volume coming into the study corridor of what was studied. But was it studied what that's gonna do outside of the corridor? So what's gonna happen on Huntington, south of San Bruno Avenue as a result of that? What's gonna happen on San Bruno Avenue for cars transiting into northbound Huntington? With that really, that that reduction down to one, was that part of the study?
Well, that was at the very edge of the study network. So we did include the San Bruno Avenue and Huntington Avenue intersection. So we don't really look at the impacts on Huntington, south of San Bruno, but you're right, it would add some delay for traffic, say either a northbound through or a a eastbound making a left turn onto Huntington Avenue North. There there would be some addition additional delay for vehicles waiting to make that movement.
Yeah, I I really don't understand why that wouldn't have been part of the study because, you know, making up, making a big change right at the edge of of the study um, area would obviously impact.
And yes, and that was, yeah, it would, that was part of the network that we looked at and we could um, I suppose the report that we sent you, um, we started measuring the travel time as vehicles were exiting that San Bruno Avenue Huntington um, intersection. From there up to Sneath Lane, that was how we measured the northbound. Um, but you're right, it it would be, and there is some delay. I actually went in and looked at the detailed model outputs. There is additional delay for vehicles waiting to get into the study corridor. You know, either westbound right or northbound through, westbound left.
Right, so that that I think is important. You know, I I'm not in favor of delaying this project or or do having folks go back and do more work or whatever, but this is the kind of information that we need in order to to move ahead with stuff like this because
But those were not, that's not part of the uh, the recommended alternative from staff. That aspect of it.
Well, there's two alternatives that would require narrowing that lane.
Right.
And the other alternative, you can't have a life, a bike lane in that area. Okay, I'll move on to my next question.
And that that intersection would be seeing high delays, you know, in the future regardless, so.
Um, this is, this is more of a a curiosity question because I know the cycle tracks exist all over the place and there's, I'm sure there's a mitigation, but um, I you might, you might have to bring up slide nine from the presentation, either nine or ten. In both option two and three, right-hand turns from westbound San Bruno Avenue coming under the the, under the train overpass onto northbound Huntington. What, how do, how do, how do you prevent cars from turning into the cycle track? For people who aren't paying attention. Because you you have to go past the cycle track and then turn to go north. How is that typically handled? I know, again, we're not reinventing the wheel here, but I'm, I'm not familiar with how that's usually done from an engineering perspective.
So that's something that will uh, look at as part of the detailed design to make sure that it's uh, safe for all users.
Okay, so that's part of the design phase and not something that's been addressed yet.
Right, yes.
Okay. Um, on slide eleven, you and you you explained it and I didn't, I didn't understand it. So I, how again does one of the scores went up by taking out a, by taking out a a lane and I didn't follow how that could be. One of the, one of the, one of the um, the letter grade scores for traffic actually improved by removing a lane and I
Yes, I I think you're, you're talking about the intersection.
I think it was Huntington and Sneath.
Uh, not Huntington and Sneath. Maybe we should put the slide back up.
I think it was eleven. I took a note.
The uh, the Huntington and Forest Lane intersection?
No, it's Huntington and Sneath at the bottom there. Oh, no, like Huntington Herman goes from D to a C and Huntington Sneath goes from a B to an A by taking out.
Yes, so we think that's probably due to that bottleneck effect of both of the build alternatives do reduce the northbound lanes down to one for at least a short section. So what happens is there's actually fewer vehicles getting into the study corridor and going through that. It it sort of meters the traffic that reaches the Huntington Herman intersection. So there's fewer vehicles reaching it, reduces the delay slightly. And I think it was pretty close to the threshold for D to C, so that just tipped it back into the C. So you might have to wait longer to get into that corridor. But once you're in, then there's less traffic there at this, uh, and I think this is a four-way stop or
Okay.
A stop-controlled intersection anyway.
Okay, I thank you for, thank you for explaining that again. I didn't, I didn't.
So yeah, some of the results are kind of counterintuitive.
Um, all right, so this is the uh, funding question, grant question. So I, you know, obviously we've got, we've got the grants we've already um, uh, been awarded, which is great. There's nothing preventing us from applying for additional funding to fund the rest, is there? There's not like, you can't, you can't go back, you can't go back to the feds and they'll say no because you already have this other grant. The, the, there's other projects where they piece together multiple grants to fund, to to fund.
Right, there's nothing preventing us from applying for more grants or maybe funding source becomes available.
The reason that I ask is I'm sure, as I'm, I'm sure that you guys are monitoring closely the um the president is gonna be putting out a uh, infrastructure plan. And this would, this would be uh something that we may want to, you know, have shovel ready to be able to apply for, apply for that when that funding, it, assuming that gets approved and when that, when that opens up. So I wanted to throw that out there. I'll uh, I'll hold off on my comments on which alternative is best, um, in in my view for that part of the discussion, but that's the end of my questions.
Thank you. Um, anybody else? Councilmember uh, Salazar?
I I don't have any questions. I think the uh, staff report was uh, was very, very thorough. Um, and I I think my colleagues uh, brought up some good points, so I don't have anything further to ask.
Apologize, I just saw the mic uh, turn on, so I assumed. Um, so um, you know, when this was first brought up some time ago with the former director, um, not uh, Mr. Tan, but in the community development. Um, I didn't agree with it then as far as the one lane because I was thinking down the road and then just the congestions. So I appreciate that staff has looked at that and looked, excuse me, to maintaining uh, all four lanes because I think that's, that's important for me. Uh, the funding is, of course, um, it's, it's, it's a lot. Um, and in order for us to use the two million, we have to do the whole stretch. Though for the Transportation Authority, it goes down to one point four if it's less than that. Um, but I'm hopeful too that with uh, what may be coming out of Washington, but we never know how quick, that maybe the shovel in the ground as was used before um, would afford us that opportunity. That usually is what is happening not only on a federal level, but more of a state and even uh, more local levels that um, what we're looking to regionally is that if they're ready to go, we want to make sure that they can uh, succeed and and pursue it quickly. Um, also something is in the county-wide, there's only such a, as what we've changed is a timeframe. So if it's not used and it's just delayed and delayed, eventually those funds, those funds may become unavailable. So that is uh, something that has not always been that, but uh, that body learned something from another city uh, which kept going for five years and then it ended up not happening at all. So um, anyway, but then um, as far as the staff report and and the presentation and what my colleagues have asked, I think this uh, Vice Mayor Medina?
Thank you, uh, Mayor Medina. Could uh, could staff break down the cost for the design, estimated design costs and the construction costs?
Uh, yeah, give me a moment while I get that. You're referring to alternative three, the full build with without lane removal?
Sure.
Um, so as far as the breakdown of cost goes, um it uh, construction is estimated, uh, this for again, for alternative three, uh, maintaining both travel lanes and also having a cycle track. Construction is uh, estimated to be about five, five million dollars. Uh, the rest of it, uh, one point eight is related to right away uh, uh, engineering costs and construction engineering costs.
Okay, that that's helpful. Um Mr. Mayor, if um
Please.
If there are any other questions, I was gonna go ahead and proceed into what what my preferred alternative is.
Not seeing any? Uh, please, thank you. I'm sorry, Councilwoman Mason, do you have a question or, oh, hold on, Vice Mayor, I apologize. Councilwoman Mason, did you have a question?
Um, I just wanted to point out that somebody's um, posting, there's a bunch of things in the chat that I know Melissa just jumped in and said, public comment for this item's over, but maybe we should ask those questions. This is the only person here.
Okay, well, there are some other people here, but so it wasn't a question and staff can see those as well. Let me, let me go to to the Vice Mayor.
Sure, I I I saw those questions and I'm still ready for my recommendations, but if
Please go ahead.
Okay. So clearly I recall Mr. Mayor, when we were at the uh, on the dais when we first heard this and when I, when they, it was reported we're gonna close the lane on uh, Huntington, it was like, wow, that's, that's gonna be messed up. And I'm glad staff has gone back and looked at things and and are providing us with alternatives. Uh, alternative one is definitely off the table for me. Um, choosing between alternative two and three, um, my concern is the cost and proceeding uh, without having those costs in hand. Um, there are numerous things in San Bruno that need funding. And my preference would be to go with two with a potential phasing of the designing construction. Um, knowing that the design and right away is one point eight and the construction's five, that potentially there could be a way that we could uh, get the design conducted. And as we're proceeding with construction, if the, if the additional funds do come in, then we could come back and and approve um those um, additional phases of construction or the additional phase of construction. Um, I heard staff answer, yes, there, and I think pretty much everyone can agree there, there will be something different at Tanfran in the future. Um, I can see that with additional work, that housing would be definitely one of those options. We, we have a very high uh, regional housing number that we need to meet. And I find it almost impossible to do without utilizing some of that space um at Tanfran. And when that development does come, the benefit to, the benefit that that project brings, they're also, they need to take responsibility. And that project needs to pay for those improvements and it seems perfectly aligned from Herman to Sneath, that that is right along the edge of the property and those uh, funds of mitigating the traffic impacts that all that uh, development will bring. Um will have, will be able to have that money be placed into this second phase. And hopefully, as Councilman Hamilton said, with with this infrastructure bill coming forward, that um we could, we could start aligning ourselves. Um, so in order to utilize the grants that we have now, um, I'm in favor of two with with a phasing of three. And um, that's, that's where I'm at right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, city manager?
Sure, uh, thank you, council member, um, or council member, mayor, uh, Vice Mayor Medina for that suggestion. Um, why don't I have staff opine because there's challenges with option two uh, with regard to maintaining the grants we have. Um, uh, for example, for our TA grant, there's not a ability for a half grant. It's either um, alternative one and we receive one point four million or alternative two and we receive the two million dollars. So we may very well be leaving money um, on the table. Uh, and then there's also the OTC um, uh, grant. But the O-Bag grant, uh, where we may actually lose that grant if we uh, do not proceed with either uh, option one or option three. So let me turn it over to staff, uh, and then we can come back to talk a little bit more about money. So, okay, we'll be
First, uh, so to add some additional detail, um, the O-Bag grant was, uh, the scope of that is nine hundred fourteen thousand, just as a reminder. And um, that is for if the city decides to construct a full segment cycle track. Um, it's nine hundred fourteen thousand, uh, It's 914,000, uh, and they haven't, uh, let us know yet if we do the half segment, would there be reduction funds? Or could we, uh, maintain all the 914,000? Um, so, uh, there is, uh, that flexible, no, that one's inflexible, the varying amount, that's still unknown for O-Bag. There are also, uh, O-Bag is a federal grant and because it is a federal grant, there are some, uh, requirements that need to be followed. Should we decide to proceed with that, um, staff will do our best to make sure that we, uh, meet those requirements that, but, um, some of it does depend on outside agencies such as, uh, BART and SAPUC. And, uh, well, we're certainly, we'll, we'll, we'll work with them very closely. Some of it is out of control.
David, if I wanna, if I may add, um, one statement there, you mentioned, you know, O-Bag is, you know, the grant for the entire segment, but it's only for, uh, the lane removal option, correct?
Uh, it was called for the lane removal, uh, but from my understanding, speaking with the granting, uh, agency, even, as the important thing is that we have the cycle track. So whether or not we decide to remove the lane or not, um, that's really a moot point.
Thank you. So, um, you know, I really think this is one of those opportunities, uh, where, um, we, we as a community are really looking forward to the future and choosing the best option for San Bruno, knowing that we have a financial delta that we need to, need to solve. Um, if we take a look at alternative three, it's a $6.8 million project. And in hand, staff, um, um, has already been able to attain nearly $3 million in grant funds. And so that leaves a $3.8 million, $3.9 million delta that we still need to fund. Uh, certainly there are development projects in this area, uh, that, uh, uh, may, and, uh, I agree with Vice Mayor Medina, should contribute, uh, to this project and we need to continue to have those conversations. Um, certainly, uh, there are other federal grants that we all know about, uh, that, that may come out that we will, uh, apply for. Uh, but unfortunately, when we're doing this long-term visiting, uh, you do not always have the project fully funded. Uh, we know that to be the case on the, um, a regional stormwater project, nearly a $20 million project, uh, where, where we have a little bit over $2 million in grant funds and that project isn't fully funded, but we're plowing ahead because it's the best thing for San Bruno. And so, uh, we do have a, if we wanted to remove, um, one lane, we do have a fully funded project. Uh, but, but that has negative implications. Uh, and if we're looking forward to having a full cycle track in order to be in the best position where we maintain those funds we have, uh, it's really alternative three that places the city in the, the best position, knowing that we have a funding gap that we need to, uh, forthrightly, uh, go about and try and solve. And sort of, uh, putting on, uh, my city manager hat, I know that that, uh, is a mission of the organization to go out and find as many additional funds, uh, be they grant funds or development contributions to fund this. Uh, but we're recommending that to council because it is the best outcome, uh, uh, we believe, uh, for, for San Bruno and maintaining the travel lane, but also having those protected bike lanes uh, and maintaining, uh, the nearly $3 million in grant funds that have already been dedicated to this project.
Hey, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Salazar?
You, Mr. Mayor. So, the more I hear, the more I'm convinced that, uh, for me, option one is the only one that really makes sense. And, uh, you know, hearing that, that's the only one that's really the, a funded project is kind of a clincher for me. Because if we, if we want to guarantee success, I think we gotta pick projects that we know we can build and we know we can afford. And yes, there is, there is a downside to the, the traffic flow. But what I'm seeing from the traffic report is that not only is it, I mean, we're preserving only a tiny bit of improvement over, um, you know, taking that lane out, but then all that benefit is erased within a few years. So we all, we end up in the same place where we're still F across the board. Um, it could happen sooner. If development comes sooner, then we get to that full F across the board even sooner. So is it really worth tripling, uh, the, the cost of the project and having to go scratch for more funds if in the end we end up in the same place? So, you know, I am fully in favor of having one completed project, one big win for, uh, a cycle track somewhere in the city, uh, that we can actually pull off. And it really seems that we have a winner in that option one. And we still have a ton of other segments in the city that need to be completed. I attended a, a, a lecture, a little, uh, webinar on, uh, what they're doing on the Grand Boulevard. And, you know, they're, they're, you know, fully invested in, in trying to get that funded. And that's gonna go right through San Bruno and we're gonna have to make some improvements there. So, um, is this tiny little segment here really where we want to put all our eggs? Uh, you know, that's, uh, it's, it's a very small basket when there's gonna be some really big projects coming up all around us that are going to be, uh, impacting, uh, more of the region. So I, I, I get that this is an important segment. But I don't think that we should be spending any more effort than necessary in getting that cycle track open. So I say let's, uh, let's make this low hanging fruit. Let's go with the project we can afford and one that we can probably complete in the shortest amount of time.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember, for your comments. Other colleagues? Uh, Councilmember, uh, Hamilton?
Um, so I, um, I mean, I also, I mean, obviously it's, it's, it's tempting to go, to go with the, the low hanging fruit option. It's just, it's hard to fathom having only one lane north on Huntington, knowing the, that we're going to have housing at Tanfran and, and commercial and, you know, who knows what at Tanfran. And the South Line project, which, you know, we're already getting, we already know there's gonna be a massive amount of traffic. And, um, just from the logistics of, of South Line, people aren't gonna be going through, South City to get there. So that, that's, that's my biggest concern with option one. Um, I, I, I understand that eventually, eventually all the models show that we're gonna be Fs everywhere. But, you know, one lane versus two lanes is the difference between an F and an F minus minus. Um, meaning, you know, perhaps grid, you know, you know, complete gridlock and, you know, horrendous backups and just a giant mess. That, that's, that's my biggest concern. So I, I, I'm in favor of a cycle track. I'm not, and, and I'm not in favor of doing it halfway, either by removing a lane early, by building half of it. And I was gonna make a similar suggestion that, that the Vice Mayor made about can we, you know, do, do it in phases? And, and, you know, and, but now hearing the, the, the difficulty that causes with the grants, that, that, that sounds like that's not, um, that's not feasible. The, my, where, where my head is at is that we have so many pressing needs. It's hard to justify committing three and a half, $3.9 million to this right now. And what I, what I think we should do, knowing that we've got until, it was early 2023 to come through with all the funding sources and we know that there's other, there's other development coming, um, and potential federal grants and stuff. I would recommend that we, that we approve option three and work and authorize doing the design as soon as possible to get that completed as quickly as we possibly can so that we are ready should federal funding from the infrastructure plan or other, other things come up. Um, other sources of, of, of funding, we're ready with a shovel-ready plan to be able to apply to those. So that's, that's where my head's at.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, uh, Councilmember Salazar, give your hand up.
So I, I wanted to add, so, uh, uh, Councilmember Hamilton, great points as always. But, you know, one thing I, I wanted to throw out there too is that, you know, drivers do tend to be, um, they sort of learn patterns. And, and if we're talking about people that are consistently commuting, if we have an area that we envision as being a cycle pedestrian priority area, keeping cars out of there should be part of our goal, not encouraging more cars to come there. And so if drivers know that that area is impacted, they will tend to find a way, even if they're not using ways, they'll find a way around, uh, to find, uh, lanes that are less occupied and, and routes that are more efficient for them to get to their, to their, uh, end goals. I mean, I get complaints all the time from people that we have too much traffic coming off San Bruno Avenue into residential areas. Um, so I, I think keeping cars flowing, uh, you know, from, from east to west, getting them to the, the bigger corridors is probably a better plan than trying to accommodate them into these smaller segments. And so, um, I, I really think if we want to prioritize this as a pedestrian and bicycle-friendly corridor, um, you know, I, I think we need to deprioritize making it, uh, vehicle-friendly. And, and, and I, I think trying to do both is, is gonna prove to be extremely expensive and ultimately i- it's gonna fail.
That's a, that's a, uh, uh, the, it's, it's another way of looking at what we, what we've seen, you know, that, that came through in the, 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 um, bike and pedestrian plan of all that, the whole thing, the whole concept of a road diet. Let's give it a road diet and maybe the, maybe the cars will go away. Uh, I don't, oh, I don't subscribe to that in every scenario. I don't think that's always true. Um, and the alternatives for folks to find a different way to drive to that area, are limited. You know, if you're coming off 101 and you need to get to Tanfran, how are you gonna go? You know, or, or, you know, or, you know, if you're, if you're commuting to the South Line, how are you gonna go? I don't know, that's.
It, it could cause people also to.
Looking forward to more discussion from others.
Yeah, no, no, definitely. And, and, you know, possibly getting people to rethink public transit as well. When, you know, when driving starts becoming that much of a pain, then you start thinking, okay, well, BART's right there. Let me jump on BART or let me, uh, you know, ride my bike down to Caltrain and, and jump on that.
Uh, Councilmember Mason? Councilmember Mason?
Oh.
You're, oh, you're on mute.
Mayor Medina, my, my wifi's a little unstable right now, sorry.
No worries.
I can't hear you, my name. So, um, so I, I think that when we talk about, you know, um, San Bruno and, you know, this place where we want families to live and play and I don't have the whole, you know, statement in front of me, but I think something people forget about when we talk about transit-oriented cities is that, um, I have two kids and I'm not gonna throw them on a bike and, um, and BART, it's just not gonna happen. And as we, um, depending on how, you know, this county is the future of San Bruno to be a family-friendly city. And, um, and I think that we have to be realistic that people are gonna drive. And, um, and so when I look at, uh, how we're forming the future, I definitely hear Councilmember Salazar's, um, per, point and, you know, the, the vision kind of for the future. But I also don't want to lose track of the fact that people are still driving cars. And, um, you know, as we all know, there's a, one of the biggest complaints we all get is the amount of cars people are parking in their lots. Um, which tells me that people aren't getting less cars. I think their, their kids are growing up. You're having intergenerational houses and usually more cars, not less. And so to take away a lane, I think in a city that's only gonna be getting more crowded as we see from the, you know, the, that 11,000 number that's out like throughout YouTube, I think it's 600 new employees, every year for the next 10 years. Um, and a percentage of all these employees are obviously going to take public transit, but not 100%. And so you're still gonna see an increase in traffic. You add to that, that if there's a, of, an emergency in the city, you do want to have as many access points as possible for your fire, for your police, um, to get through as comfortably and quickly as possible. And so, um, I don't think that really making the, um, the future vision unavailable or unattainable. I just think that we're still remaining practical about, you know, what, what those lanes look like, what our city looks like and, and how it's gonna grow. So, um, I, I don't, I just don't see how we can take away a lane. I really don't. Uh, I'd like to see, have a better idea of if you do take away these lanes and you make, um, you know, you make this, I don't, I just, I don't know. I, I think you're gonna end up with a huge backup. And, and to Salazar's point, yeah, maybe people will eventually get used to going around. And then that backlog backup is on El Camino and everywhere else. But at the end of the day, if we still want people to take BART, are we gonna have people going all over San Bruno that's gonna pick people up and drive them down to, trying to figure out how people are gonna get to BART, how people are gonna get to Caltrain, because those parking lots are right in the center of this project. So, uh, so I, I feel like it would be prudent to take away any lanes, even if it's a more expensive project, um, in absence seeing numbers that show something different. And as far as what the Democrat, I, I just don't see it as being very practical. So, um, so alternative three is what seems to be, um, the best alternative. And, and I, I think it would be good really to have a better understanding of our population growth just because that's gonna be the central, uh, of our city as we.
Okay, um, thank you, Councilmember Mason. I heard three. And then I have hands up from, uh, Mr. Salazar, Councilmember, and then, uh, in the, uh, room 150.
And, and so, you know, I, I agree, probably taking lanes away in, in most parts of the, of any city probably doesn't make a whole lot of sense if you want, because there are gonna be a lot of cars. And that's why we fought so hard to, uh, change the parking requirements in our transit corridor because we understood that there were gonna be more cars. But, um, yeah, I mean, I, I see the impact here as being pretty minimal. And also I'm, I'm hearing about other cities that have, because of COVID, gone to parklets in their downtowns, uh, that they're thinking of keeping those permanent. And that definitely has an impact on, on traffic in their probably really busy corridors. But yet they're, uh, you know, they're looking at some of the, the benefits of making those areas more walkable, uh, by doing just that. And, um, one, one point that, uh, Councilmember Mason made that, uh, that kind of struck a chord with me. And since we have the police chief on, I did want to hear about what the perceived impact is uh, as these, um, traffic conditions worsen and with our, uh, police station being right there, even though cars exit over to the Sneak side, uh, are, are there any anticipated, uh, uh, service impacts because of that?
Police Chief, uh, Johansson, is that something you wish to address or can address or at this time?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. I apologize that I don't have video. I'm, I'm in a bit of an unstable connection.
No problem.
Um, yeah, I, obviously I have not done any kind of formal study on response time impacts, but I can tell you that without question, any of the options that reduce the lanes of travel along Huntington, uh, are gonna be problematic given, given the location of our police department, which is not anticipated to change anytime in the near future. That is a main response route to emergency calls for service for your police department. And any reduction in lanes, regardless whether they're south or northbound, uh, will have a, will have an impact on response times. So if that's at all helpful in, in your decision-making process, uh, I'm happy to answer any other questions. But, but pretty definitively, we, we would prefer the police department to maintain all the lanes of travel.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, City Manager?
I was actually gonna ask the police chief to chime in and so that just happened. I'll lower my head.
Okay, um, all right. So what I'm, yeah, I'll give you my perspective. I'm not gonna repeat, uh, Councilmember Hamilton. You hit a lot of the, um, thought, my thought process in court, so I'm not gonna repeat it just to take mine. The Vice Mayor had said it and, and I'm, I'm still feeling the way I felt then when I heard about, uh, removing, uh, a lane on Huntington. And, and it has been a lot of time that has elapsed from then to now. I still feel that, um, I'm more, a little feeling more concrete than I already was, but even hearing from our chief. And for me to, you know, I, I think if we're gonna do it, we need to do it. And I think, uh, we have to look, uh, far-reaching. I think we come in an opportunity and a time with hopefully infrastructure and things that we, you know, at, at the county level, they're, they're saying, hey, we gotta start doing things in these next two years because this is maybe the window in which to have some, uh, additional resources that come from Washington. And gosh knows when there's a, another presidential election, who knows what will happen. And gosh knows when there's another presidential election, who knows what will happen? So, you know, so I, my view is option three. So what I've heard from council is option one, a person, option two, but then to go to three, but two for now, and then three for three. So City Manager, does that give you the information you need? You're on mute. There you go.
Yes, yes. Option three, we will proceed with and move down that path if there's confirmation from, I believe that's Tom Hamilton, Mayor Rico Medina and Linda Mason to proceed with option three.
And that, that's what I recorded. I just wanna affirm, I got a thumbs up, correct, Mr. Hamilton, that that's what you said?
Yes, yes. I also said that I, I really, I really think we need to prioritize completing the design as soon as possible so that to facilitate us getting additional funding from other sources.
And Councilmember Hamilton, and don't worry about, Councilmember Mason, I'm sorry. I know you have the wifi, but I want to make sure reaffirm with you was number three as well? Option three? Good. Okay, I got a thumbs up. Okay.
Yes, that's correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
So thank you. That concludes the direction we need to communicate with the granting agencies and move forward with design work. And we will forthrightly do that as well as work on ways to bring you a fully funded project.
Okay, thank you. And again, there were some comments and that we did have a public, a public was allowed to speak on this topic. They went right after the PowerPoint presentation by staff. And there are some comments that can be looked at. Staff has seen those just as for some, some thoughts. Okay, with that said, then we're going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held on April the 13th, 2021 at seven o'clock virtually. Thank you everybody for your time and I think this is much better we met now than continued from 1:00 AM. So thank you for making that time available to us and thank you staff for being here and taking care of that. Everybody, enjoy your evening.